To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had a discussion about this application for abatement last week, Royce.
Yes.
This is the one that you were gonna...I asked you if you would write the denial.
You asked me to write denial?
Yes, this is the one that...
I said I'd refer that to Ben. So we get a terminology right. Said I'd ask him about it, and you know what?
Actually, that's the one that I threw back at you guys.
Yeah, yeah.
What decision was made? I guess denial, got that part, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah. And this, I've just got attached to this, the one that you had written previously, for the same kind of a situation. So, am I handing this to Ben, or am I handing it to you?
You can hand it to me. Now hand it to Ben.
Well, that's fine, I just...
And if you like, we'll be together on that.
I don't need to?
Okay, I don't think so. And thank you.
Thanks. So you'll just give that back to me then with the letter, so I can send it to them?
Okay.
Thanks.
I'm ready to see what we can go.
It was in your box, I just put it there.
Okay, and I have an application for a veteran's exemption.
What's this? Yeah, last week.
I got up and grabbed it for you.
I saw it on the email, but thank you. How many, why are they coming in?
I didn't write any more.
13. 12. Do you want one more cigarette?
We don't need one more, no.
Do you guys wanna see the veteran's exemption?
Okay, and then this generator thing will all send back.
You'll need one cigarette, John?
Yeah. So you keep those copies in a book in the vault?
What's that?
The DD-214s.
They're in there, but I locked that cabinet.
Is it fireproof? These cabinets are not... It should be in the vault, really.
But is the vault fireproof?
I know, I know. I mean... You're probably right, yeah.
Well, and, and there was a point where we were separating them from the abatements, and keeping them there, but then we just decided, I'm locking it all in there, so they're all together. The abatement and the DD-214, so that nobody can get in there.
Okay.
But if you guys want me to move them, I will. I mean, that's up to you.
But I mean, is, is the vault fireproof?
And I'm not trying to be fresh, I'm just asking.
Probably not. No. It doesn't even have a real door on it. We talked about that for several years.
I take it this second name on here is because it's a paraplegic, right?
The second name?
Yep. And they do have something on the top of that?
Oh, I think, yes, but I think he just...
She asked, she asked the signs in two walls.
No. No, I think she, I think he proba...they probably just wrote it the same, because they also put in a homestead exemption at the same time. This is for, just for him.
Right. Why, you know, I knew that.
He's not paraplegic.
Oh, I thought it was checked off. Oh, I'm sorry. But anyways, it was kinda unusual that two names, when it was an application like that.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is all set?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I think I don't have anything else. Now, what's, oh, this is, okay, so what do you wanna do about this email from John? Well, who was it from? Sergeant Shapiro that passed it on to us?
I think we should try to settle an appointment, maybe with Paul Pelletier from Trains, and Sergeant Shapiro. Do you think that we should?
And you should also include your fire chief, and you should also include your codes officer.
Oh, absolutely.
So, when do you wanna do this?
Well, I...probably Monday afternoon. I mean, I'm okay with that, if I can.
So, we're gonna have Paul, Dan, and Mike, and Sergeant Shapiro, or do you... Or does John Darcy?
Joe Perdarsi is one of the troopers that's currently... Who made with Lepner.
Okay. Well, I'll email...
He's the one that, he's the one that sent the email to Shapiro.
Shapiro, yeah.
Okay, so I'll copy both of them and ask them if they can attend as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
What's the email regarding to?
Probably...
Yes, it's concerning about people being...
Same old.
Overserved at trains. So maybe if we have a meeting with all of us, then maybe...
I'm just curious.
Maybe.
Why does that concern codes and fire?
Well, fire, for rescue reasons, I mean, if they're...
They've both spoken to me about it.
No, and...
And said and expressed concerns.
Fire or rescue, I understand, that they might, in case things happen, have concerns about this, but I mean, this is just about over-serving too, so...but I think that, you know, they have legitimate codes, I don't, you know, he doesn't, to me.
There might be some questions that come up that concern the codes, and I'm gonna end up calling them anyway.
But, um...
More issue than that as well, because people are knocking on neighbors' doors of mine in the middle of the night, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, intoxicated as well, just having a...
Same kind of situation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be careful.
You know, I think if we have...
Paul's definitely there.
If they come, yeah, if they come in, maybe if Paul comes in, and we can all have a conversation about it and see, maybe we can talk to his staff, and, I don't know.
They're done that.
Yeah.
Been questions that have come up before, same thing that you're thinking about now?
Yeah.
It's repeat?
No, sometimes it doesn't hurt to repeat a little bit.
It's also a death since, since the first time.
Yeah, yeah.
There was definitely link back there.
Yeah.
He brought in some training, special trainer there, somebody that used to be on state police to help teach as well, and that's, for a short period of time, I don't know if you're aware of that.
If you can go by what, what the trooper's reported there...
So maybe you need to do one.
Why, why was a person standing out in the middle of that parking lot that night, sick and obviously over-served?
Well, I think we'll bring him in, talk to him.
At least obvious to a state trooper.
See what Paul says, see if he, you know, maybe Paul doesn't even know.
Maybe.
I mean, it's good to have him come in and have a conversation. Well, you know, you gotta keep them down. Needs to be here, so that's...okay. All right, we'll talk and see if I can get them off come next week. Okay. Got it?
The Hivo-Hivo property.
Yes.
You guys had spoken to Don Luke's and John Bozak. And I don't know which piece you were talking about, because it looks like we have three pieces on Hivo-Hivo, so what I did, I made a copy, proportion of the map where they are. So, do you know by looking?
I do not know by looking. I do not know by looking, but I'm gonna go back through this stuff today and see if I can find it, so that way we can send it off to them.
Oh, all right. Well, then here's the...
John Bozak might know too, for sure, which piece it was, if they need to research.
All right, well, those are the three. And, um...so once you find out, let me know, and I can, well, the, the map, I mean, the book and page numbers are on the papers that I gave you, so I don't know what else they need to know, but if you really need to send an email to somebody.
Yeah.
So what's going on with the union?
Well, that's not something you can talk in public about, Royce, so if you want to go into executive session, you can go into executive session.
I don't have to at the moment, but I'd kinda like to know, because this is a pretty confusing mystery to pick right up.
Sue, you had brought this county tax property, or backed her up, do you remember? Did you get a chance to get some of these numbers? This is probably my copy, you probably have this copy.
I'll look at the one that we did the last time, because, like, this stuff here, I don't know how I'm gonna be able to find that out. Total increase in land value attributable to parcel splits and new subdivisions. I'll look and see how that was done the last time.
Is that something you tax collector needs to be part of?
She's got one that was done last time, so we'll take a peek, see if we can look at it. Ben may be able to know. Do you know anything about the county tax property growth factor? I don't think we've done it for several years. I think Sue's got a copy of an old one, but do you, does it ring a bell with you?
No. I don't think I did it.
Yeah, I think it's been a few years. Are you grabbing the old copy, Sue? Oh, I'm trying to find it. Okay.
Did you guys ever get any results from the census?
I have not.
As I've been throwing paperwork at us like two years ago, I don't know how long it usually takes to, I was just curious with the numbers. It's like a foghorn.
It was on the table, that's why.
It's almost as good as mine.
You had a copy of it, because I saw it. You got it? Who did it last? A long time ago, wasn't it?
I don't know, this one is like 2010.
Yeah.
And I don't know that we've done it...
It was 2014. It's 2000...no, one good thing is you did it in 2010.
Well, I don't know, I'll take a look at it and see.
Was it not done after that in there?
I, I'll have to look and see if I've got a newer one, but I don't know. You don't really know who ever doing this, do you?
No, but what was the extra monies that we were supposed to pay for county tax? Remember how there was always a add-on? Can't remember the exact number now, 15,000?
Oh, that was...
How was that generated?
That was...
I can't remember.
That was different from this. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm asking.
It was, what the heck, how, because that was when Bob Frazel was in, and there was a period of time that we had to make up, there was like five years that we had to pay extra into the county tax.
One more year.
But, it, I don't think it's got to do with this.
I was just curious, because I understand the reason that if there was a count done, maybe there was a miscount somewhere, and you're making up for it, you know, because more people...
Oh, no, that, that had to do with like the whole, everybody had to do that. It wasn't just us, and you could choose to, to pay for it in increments like we did.
Yeah.
I mean, this specifically says, per main statute, you must compile assessment data annually, it says annually, from the county's municipality in order to determine the annual assessment limit for the county. So it must be something that they do. Toward this end, please complete the enclosed form for 2016 and return it to me. Thank you in advance. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact them. So, well, we can contact them, Sue.
Is that LD-1?
Well, I don't think it is LD-1, because LD-1 we...
It is LD-1, also known as LD-1.
Well, not done with that.
Yeah. That's a problem.
So it's supposed to be done every year, and it hasn't been done in six?
I don't, I really don't know. I can't answer that, I wasn't here, I don't know. I mean, from what we can find from paperwork, it hasn't been done for a few years.
Or 2010.
So maybe we don't have to, maybe they, maybe they contacted them, we really don't have to, I'm not sure. So, I can't, I won't answer either way. This paper says they, you know, we must compile data annually from, but I don't know what it said last year, or if we got one last year. It looks like they, they only send it on the even years from in here, all that's in here is an even year, so I don't know.
Do you mind if I go up and help, because she said there's some people waiting? Is that all right? It's a good bit, and it's done. This is 10. All right, so I'll... This is the one we need to do, okay. I'll have Sue problem, we need to figure out, get that done for next week, so I'll just put a little sticky on her, here for her. What else do I have?
That, we go into executive floor, I have to figure out what that is. I think I know, but...
Can I look at it?
Do you have, that one? It's probably the same thing you have.
I don't change. Oh. Possible.
So she's gonna take care of that.
I'm gonna go see if Jordan has any other budgets ready for us in that format.
You see Sue Shaw's road? Did you go see Sue Shaw's road?
Today?
Yeah.
No.
Looked decent, I went by. It looked decent, I went by.
All right. And I probably get back out over the hill.
I don't, I didn't talk to Mary today, but, and I don't know why Dana's not here, maybe he wound up in the ditch, I don't know, but when I went by, I, I usually just drive to the top of the hill and look, and it looked decent, so, I mean, it wasn't the best job I've ever seen. Uh, I guess about 10:30, quarter of a left, 10:30?
10:30?
Yeah.
That's right on schedule.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so...I wasn't depressed when I saw it.
I think the problem showed itself, and it's, it's been taken care of.
Yeah, I think so, though. Well, that's why I just went and looked, instead of calling anybody else to go look, you know, I just went and looked, it looked good.
Well, I hadn't heard any calls or anything, so I figured out, I was saying, but again, I missed one of the times, so...
Yes, you did. That's all right. I just wanted the flag fixed. I'm, I'm about, I, I don't even know how I'm being quiet this one. I'm so angry at asking for six months for our flag to be taken care of, I can't even think anymore.
Well, at the moment, I'm looking for an electrician for the town, because we, yeah, we've got people that want the job, but they don't show up, and...
Well, it shouldn't take an electrician to put the flag at half-staff. That flag should have been at half-staff since Pearl Harbor Day. I think one day an exception, but because of the Charlotte church killings and stuff like, their flag should be at half-staff. It has not been all week. I told them the day before, the 6th, I told them that on Pearl Harbor Day, it would have to be put at half-staff. It never got lowered, and it's not disrespectful to me, you know? It's disrespectful to every person in this country, and I'm really, really tired of the disrespect in this office badly.
It's kind of a very cool around the office, here it does that.
Well, nobody will tell me, Royce, and today I want an answer, because I'm tired of calling you about it, I'm tired of sitting in this meeting about it, and I wanna know who is responsible for it, finally, once and for all, I wanna know who's responsible for it, and they need to really get on that. Like I said, it's not only disrespectful to me, it's disrespectful to every person in this country, and I'm really tired, tired, tired of it. It makes me ill, I wanna throw up.
Well, now, did we spend, really don't know, has anybody been assigned to do that or not?
Were we talking about the flag?
Mm-hmm.
Traditionally, I mean, way back when, I can't speak, we have to make a decision, because, you know, Laura and I used to go out and put the flag up and down, it's a pain in the neck, though, it doesn't, we'd get somebody to do it when we had to do it, but I don't know, we haven't really had the conversation, so I'm not sure.
Can we have that conversation? I've been asking since June, Christine, and it, this is December, and I, I really don't wanna start the new year, looking at that flag, being disrespected every single time I drive by this office. Like I said, if you don't have respect for each other, if you don't have this respect for people in this town, have respect for your veterans, have respect for everybody else in this country, because that flag stands for everybody, and you guys are, you blatant disregard for protocol with the flag is driving... It is, I've been in here since June, every week asking about that flag, every week, and I'm really getting upset.
Well, are you asking about the light for the flag?
I'm asking about respecting the flag. The light, putting it in half-staff when it belongs. Well, I'm really, I'm not doing anything to be asked to leave.
You're raising your voice, and I don't appreciate it.
Raising my voice is not illegal, Christine, it's not illegal, and I've been asking since June, it's about time somebody raised their voice, and if it has to be me, and you throw me out for asking about the flag, that's complete and utter ridiculousness.
Well, this, you know, I will, normally, it's been traditionally that the clerk is taking care of the flag, but we need to, because we're not here every day. So, I mean, that, that is probably part of the problem, where the flag needs to be, that's how it has traditionally been done. I don't know, when I wasn't here, did you guys, I mean, when Laura and I was here, we used to make sure the flag was up and down, or get somebody to do it for us, but I'm not sure.
I don't remember anybody being designated to do it.
So we can, you know, ask...
I know who was, who was doing it. Me, you?
Oh, Ben did it, see?
What's your clerk was a little longer, couple miles away.
Yeah, absolutely, so that's difficult, but, um...
I used to put the one up the Hill Town Hall for my flag.
I mean, it's not really important who used to do it, I need to know who's going to do it.
Absolutely, and that's fine, we just need to figure out who wants to, you know, and I...
What time do you put it up?
It stays up all night with no light on.
Well, it does have a light, it's just not the back light.
It doesn't have a light.
The light from that back beam.
That is a parking lot light, Christine, it's a parking lot light.
They put that top light on there to face towards that flag, I was here when they did that, so it has something on it. Granted, I'm saying it's not the dust light, but it is, it is pointed towards that flag, and that's why it was put up there, on that parking lot.
Do you want me to show you pictures? I have pictures right on my camera. You cannot see that flag at night.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but that's why that light was put there, I'm not saying it doesn't need a new light, I'm not saying that, Deb, I'm saying that that is why that light was put there. Maybe it needs to be angled or readjusted, until we can figure something else out for it, but that is why it was there. So does either, does either one of you wanna take care of this flag out here? I would say I would, but I just don't even come by here.
What is it, just a string?
It's not that easy, it's a crank.
Actually, it's been WD-40, it works very easy.
Oh, does it better? Yeah. Good. There's a crank for it, the flag, but it stays up all the time, it does stay up all the time. I think more of the question is, sometimes if you have to put a half mast to get it back to where it's supposed to be, and then back down if it needs to go down, is the question, when they need to go back and forth.
In other words, you weave it up all the time?
Yes. Yes.
Is there a certain rule?
I approach the best use of the medicine. Okay, so, there's a solar powered flag light for twenty-seven dollars, there's a solar powered flag light for forty. We talked about it last year. Last year, we were looking at doing something. So it's not that expensive. You have a budget account for that.
Okay. So I think, you know, we should, I gotta do this, too.
Now, that solar powered light, that needs to be right there under the, is that antenna being on the ground or is it...
Yeah, this one's cool. It attaches right on top.
And it shines down.
So nobody can mess with it. Solar's up on top.
Okay. So that means you gotta have somebody with a bucket truck put it up there?
Or your fire department.
I'll shimmy up there and put it up there if I have to. Just buy it.
Proper equipment to...
I don't know. But...
Well, I need a ladder, is what I'm saying.
Well, we might be out of luck.
Right.
All right, so, um...
It won't kick much of a drum, that's all.
Well, I'll make a motion that we, we get, we get a solar powered light, and have it attached to the top of the flag pole.
I'll second the motion. Let me purchase a flag. Solar light for the top of the pole. All in favor?
Yep.
Thank you.
Now Dale is the one that orders, so I will leave her sticky. Do you have, where is that on there?
Yeah, there's a lot of different companies. Uh, the only thing I'm looking at, because I've never seen the ones on top. Uh, I'll pull it up in a minute. But if the solar cell is up top, it'll get snow, it's not gonna, maybe we want to get one that's got the solar panel like this, angled with the light.
Yeah, you'd probably want an angled one, not a...
Shed the snow, that's why I'm concerned.
And, and face towards the sun most of the time.
Yeah, that would be cool. Well, I've never seen these. I'm, I'm pulling it up now. I, I assume the solar cells on top.
It won't pull, it won't pull much sun until probably, what, nine, nine or ten?
Nine thirty, ten o'clock, yeah.
It probably holds, um, if it has any type of battery in it, it'll hold it for quite a long time.
It won't last all night. This time of year might actually be, but at least there's something on it.
Yeah, and with the other one, maybe we have to have the other one looked at, so it just angles a little bit better. Because it used to do, it didn't shine completely on it, but it did shine better on it.
If we're gonna go through the trouble of putting a light up there, what's, what if we didn't go with the solar, what with the regular light? Facing down, like we should?
I don't know. I think, you know, solar isn't a bad idea, because then you really, hopefully, it would stay and you don't have to worry about if power those out, you know, well, we have the generator that runs it, so...
Yeah, I use the solar lights on the body shop time.
We'll go to a low...
Take them down now, but...
I believe low voltage.
They last it all night in the summertime easily.
Yeah.
This time of year, probably till like two, three o'clock.
But I al- I also believe that low voltage stuff is lasting quite, quite long these days. If you went LED and low voltage on the light, we probably wouldn't have a problem with it anyway. So perhaps we oughta look into both sides.
Okay, I'll have her, I'll have her get, you know, get some information on both.
The LED is usually a lot more expensive, but put in the long run, it'll probably be a lot less trouble. And it won't burn up that much electricity?
No. Yeah, I like the idea of it going on the top of it, though, not on the ground, because then if you put it on the ground...
It snows on and something gets it.
I mean, and we could always put it on the corner of the building, too, if we could find one that would attach that way, because the building's right there, and we can put it right up on the corner of the building and poke it up, too, that way.
But still. It snows, it's...
Could have one, Kenny's got one at the station. It's a, it's on a time bomb.
Speaking of Kenny, you got his cell phone number?
No.
You got any phone numbers to reach him with? I tried one that was in the office here. I couldn't, he didn't answer my call, which usually he would. I'd like to have him come in and do that. Do those three lights out there, so that, put the sensor on there, like we discussed to do. So they don't have to keep adjusting the timer every time you turn around.
But more importantly, okay, we get, like, somebody, I mean, I'm sure you'd have to discuss it with your people, but within a week or so, do you think you could kind of get together and figure out somebody to take care of that flag? I mean, it's, it is distressing, and not only to me. I'm not, I know I'm not the only person.
Well, I started to ask a question. Is there, uh, is, where is this, there is a set of rules written that we can go by for these, for that flag, so we're doing what we're supposed to be doing?
There is, I gotta get rules.
Correct.
Okay, online?
There is, online. This flag gotta get rules, yeah.
And none, not a single one is being followed in this town, and that's, not even one.
My home computer's down at the moment, but somebody could...
Well, whatever, you get emails, don't you, from Secretary of State, whenever the flag's supposed to be lowered or something like that?
Yes.
Well, it's supposed to get him here, too, I think.
Yeah.
You were.
Dale says she gets them. Yeah. So, I mean, I don't really care who does it, as long as it gets done.
But I don't know what you're referring to. Shut my TV off. We don't have news and all that crap. So I don't really know about any shooting, but I mean, if it happens on a Friday afternoon, and maybe they don't get it...
Right, that, no, that's completely different, correct. That is completely different. But what it was, was we had Pearl Harbor Day. Our flag was at the town office, was flying high. Of course, at the fire stations and at the post offices and stuff, they were half staff out on the main road, so at least people driving through didn't think we were all a bunch of ignoramuses. But here, it was right up to the top, even though on Tuesday I reminded everybody to put it at half staff.
Tomorrow, when I go by his house, let me have him call you.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I'll bring myself.
I got, I got your car.
Okay.
And that brings up another thing about the flag. Maybe we should, um, ask Dan to keep track of our flag also. If they're keeping good track of that flag, because they're at the station, you can also come right, come right up here.
I'd have a good idea to have more than one person checking on it.
Yeah, I mean, at least, even on the weekend, there's somebody there. They'd be checking their flag and coming to check.
Right, there's somebody there from six o'clock in the morning, so if they're doing flags, I mean, I mean, obviously, if they had a run they had to do, they can't be here lowering the flag, but within a few hours, they could be back here and putting it down.
Blood drive, this week, tomorrow or Wednesday?
Yes, Wednesday.
I wish it was today. I'd go along.
Yeah, I know, Wednesday.
Yeah, noon time to five.
Noon to five. Yeah, and you know, I asked Dan about that, because we had such great success on weekend blood drives, but apparently, he has to go by when American Red Cross schedules us. He, he doesn't really have a say on my day, which I think is too bad, because we had great times at our lunches on Sa- during the Saturday blood drives. Hey, twelve fifteen. My appointment's at twelve fifteen, too.
Yours, yours are perfect.
I'll wait until they've got you all hooked up with the needles in your arm and stuff, and I'll be right across from you going, "Royce, now you gotta listen." You won't be able to escape.
I don't know, I can, I can, I can forget that you burned the house on Sunday. I promised I'd see you Saturday night.
I, I don't know how you did that either, but...
Oh, I manage, believe me. I manage. They feel pretty good, though. They haven't told me that they, they used some platelets to help save somebody.
Don't you love those little notices that they send you back and tell you where it went?
Get something worse while.
I think St. Johnsbury likes my blood, because out of five times that I've given blood in the past year, four times my blood goes to St. Johnsbury, Vermont. And one time to Beth Israel Hospital in Boston.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, that's good.
I like those little notices they send you back. I think it's cool to know where it went. Don't. That's right. Hey, you know what? There's something to be said for adventure. Nobody can ever call me boring.
Something to be said for crazy, too.
That's, you can put that on yourself, Royce. We'll let you claim that one, brother.
I'll take any kind of fame.
Yeah, so, uh, Toys for Lebanon Kids finishes up Saturday, I think it's Saturday, is the, uh, the day that they're giving out all the toys and stuff. So, uh, this year, we got a nice donation from Caravan for Toys and from Toys for Tots as well, yeah. Both agencies gave to, to the fire department there. Cindy's done a real good job keeping in contact with everybody and going to get stuff, yeah. We went up, um, Saturday and picked up a whole entire pickup truck. She's incredible. You never hear her name, but she works so good behind the scenes. She's really incredible. We went up Saturday and picked up a whole entire pickup truck. We took Gary's pickup truck, and the Toys for Tots filled the whole back of the pickup truck and the whole back seat. We were loaded.
This is just information, proclaim request memory of them. It's from the National School Choice Week, so they pick their week. That, you know, they want us to recognize them. To just proclaim language, proclaim this mention in Town Lebanon School Choice Week, January twenty-second through the twenty-eighth. So if you wanna just kind of browse through that, and then kind of...
Don't have any kids, but I'll check it out.
No, it's for school. It's good for...
So I was just talking to, um, Bob Frizell about that extra money that we paid in York County tax. I can't remember either, but this is what it was. The tax was two sixty plus this extra here. So I've got, I'll find it. I will find it, because I remember, I, I can see his handwriting as to how we were gonna do it each year. It's right here. It's right here.
There it is.
Transitional budget.
She found it, 'cause I turned the light on.
The light came. Hi. So I still don't know what it was for.
That's, isn't this part of when we do the, um...
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, no, no. What I'm saying is, that amount, it was a, it was a lump sum amount, and they gave us the opportunity to pay it over a course of five or six years, which is what, how they chose to do it. But I still don't know. It says York County Six Months Transitional Budget.
I wonder how come we didn't sign up for the School Choice Week last year?
I don't know.
What is School Choice Week?
I think they're just asking you guys to make some stuff.
I can't really tell you. It didn't read that.
Well, then that's probably why you didn't sign up for it, because you don't know.
Haven't heard of it before.
Christine, what is School Choice Week?
Well, it's about language, I think, and it's just saying that you join them to, you know, kind of get some little detail about how they talk about, how they teach better and help the kids better. But I can read it to you. It doesn't really give you a lot of detail, and it's...
Well, is it something I can look at? I mean, I can just look at it, probably figure it out myself. I mean, School Choice Week, it sounds like you're giving people choices to go to another school.
No, 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 it's not anything like that. It's just what they put a sign out and you kind of...
But can you make that determination, or does that come through MSAD sixty?
That just came, so I'm just kind of just briefing it myself, so I'll have to read into it. There's a little website I can go to, too, that I need to go to before I...
Listen, the Honorable Division mentioned you went there.
They did?
Yeah.
Something.
You get the gold star of the day. Hey, do you have that book? Do you have that book, too? No, no, the one that you told me you were gonna give me a copy of? Yeah? Have you gotten any, um, signatures on that? None?
Now, was this something with the CMP work thing, is that something we're supposed to be showing?
The week, first week of the year, the way that...
Sue just gave that to me. I haven't...
Are we supposed to pass any information on?
New CMP alerts. Now you have the easy way to stay informed about CMP accounts. Sign up for CMP alerts. We can ask Sue. I probably, the service is available for smart meters. I don't understand anybody, I bet.
Well, it's all up here now, it's not...
You got a smart meter?
Yep. You? I think everybody got one.
No, some don't.
How come?
Something about the poles. Anyway, but I was gonna ask you some stuff. Do you, do you, do you have CMP?
Of course. You?
No.
Oh.
So I was right, Christine. This is about, "Held every January, National School Choice Week shines a spotlight on effective education options for children, including traditional public schools, public charter schools, public magnet schools, private schools, online learning, and homeschooling." So it's promoting different choices in education, but we, we don't have all those choices here, do we?
I don't know. There's a website I need to go on. I ju- I just read it out myself, so I'll have to look and see. I don't know.
Yeah, it's nothing to do with language, really.
I'll have to look and see.
Yeah, it ha- it really has nothing to do with language. This is just a suggested proclamation language.
See, I don't have bad points.
There's a thing that I can't, if even if the rates jump up, I can't quit. I have to go the whole year.
So do you know if the CMP alerts are for everybody? Can anybody go on the CMP alert, so anybody can go?
I got, I picked that up when I went to that class on Friday.
Okay.
So I put it...
That's the kind of thing, you know, if you take enough counter space, people can save some money for that.
Well, I, well, I don't know that people can save...
They can find out where they, they could all find out where the bill sits at.
Oh, their bill, yeah.
At any given time.
I can put some on the counter, but I put it on the website, and I handed it out to the...
So it's just an information thing?
Yeah, I mean, if somebody wants to sign up for it, yeah.
Okay. Do you want a copy of that, Dan?
I can put...
Yeah.
CMP alerts, and I'll just take that one.
Yeah, you can have that one back. Thank you. I can have this one?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's good for people to know.
Well, I can put, like I said, I put it on there, so I can put some on there.
Can sure s- I'll tell you what it will save, as far as money goes, it will save you from frozen pipes if you're at work and your electric goes out and you have to run home and light the wood stove to keep your pipes from freezing.
It's from the old tin, Friday.
What's this proposed budget saying here? What's this all about?
That's a budget from Betty, but he, Jordan's putting it all on the, um, budget that he's making us, so...
You just retyped it on that, you were different on the...
Is the price, they changed from last year, or...
I don't know. He's not putting it together. He'll...
Is this the stuff that's gonna be, that we have, that we should be discussing in front of the board?
Well, it's, well, you guys asked me for copies of the budget, so as I got them, I gave you copies. So that's what that is. Jordan's putting it on that spreadsheet, I guess.
Layout, so he can see before and see after.
But Betty was in here one meeting and told you what she was doing with her budget, and you guys all talked...
Yeah, her budget changed.
First that we changed it for her.
Right.
I guess I don't understand the new way of doing things here.
Well, Jordan's gonna make us the forms up, kind of like...
Hope everything works out well, that's all I can say.
So speaking of budget, so I can get my budget book, did you happen to, over the past week, get that little big sticky note?
No, I went over. Nobody was home. So I've been there, but I still haven't gotten, and they haven't gotten that to you.
Well, can, we know I'm going on, can I get a copy? Well, can, we know I'm going on, can I get a copy of the budget? I'd like to start going over it, so that I know what I'm talking about, and I can be competent, rather than just walking in and having blank...
The Budget Committee? They don't even have copies yet.
Yeah, they do.
What, last year's copies?
Yeah, I'm, I don't think so. They all walked out of here with budget books already, Betty and Becky Beal and...
From last year.
They should've already had budget books from last year, I would think, they, well...
Yeah, we haven't even been through the budgets yet, so...
Yeah, I know, but you have, like, your blank with your last two years. What has it been, the last two years' numbers are on there? And then workspace to work with the new budget, right? I don't have that yet.
Neither do I.
But the Budget Committee has it.
Yeah, from last year.
No, the Budget Committee came in and picked them up already for this year's Budget Committee.
What they came in and picked up was a print off of the expenses and revenues for last year.
For last year, but in the budget, in the book, right? Because I know that they told me it didn't have...
A, all the expenses and all the revenues from last year, that's what the Budget Committee has.
So can I get that, seeing as I'm part of the Budget Committee? You have one now?
Yeah.
Oh, good, thank you. That's what I wanted. I just wanted to be able to go over and look at the changes and get ready for Budget Committee season now, which, because we're starting way behind the eight ball, so we should be looking at it.
And the election's a month earlier than it used to be.
That's right. But, you know, I mean, I'm surprised that you...
See, now this don't work out.
I don't know how.
Well, it always does.
Well, thank you, thanks very much.
Do you guys remember if there was any, how did you handle our protocol for closing the office? You know how we told us that last week? No, they left home early for an hour to get home before I got docked last week. Do you, did you have a protocol before for closing it? Should we make a protocol for closing it for...
Usually just you put an alert on the door.
I know, but who tells who what, I guess, maybe? 'Cause where I'm kinda going.
I think we were all notified of it that day.
Oh, yeah, we were, but I just...
You mean, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you mean, like, in the morning before we even start, is what she's saying? Who calls who to let them know that we're not gonna even open? If that's the case.
Or who makes the decision to close it early? Who does make that decision?
We, as a group, we do.
I would think you would want the whole board to know about it.
Well, absolutely.
We should all be notified.
But you guys have to make the decision to close, not us.
Yes, that's right.
I believe that's what happened the last time, is it not?
Yes, it is, yes. I guess, you know, maybe I'm, you know, I just need to know who's, like, if someone's not gonna come in, who would they notify first, and then we can go from there, but...
Does it matter who gets notified first? As long as the three of us, and we're talking about the select board, right?
Yes, yes.
I mean, you might not be able to get a hold of me before they get a hold of you.
Absolutely, no, I...
You know, Paul, before they get a hold of me.
But the employees need to know, too, if somebody else isn't coming in.
So what I'll do is if I...
So if you guys wanna get in touch with us to let us know, that'd be great.
So you do, did you not get notified this morning?
I didn't get notified until I got here.
Okay. But I mean, that was before I got here, which was an hour later, right?
I'm not arguing with you, boys, I'm just saying...
No, no, I'm just saying, you know, but you get...
I didn't know till I walked through the door, and all I'm saying is...
Yes, so you had one person that didn't make it.
I'm just, I don't think of the best way to do mine, that's all.
And I, I got a phone call to that effect, I don't know, did you guys get a call or anything?
I got an email this morning, yes.
And you did, too, right? So we all three knew.
No, I did not, I did not. Well, she let me know.
I was talking about the board, but yeah, we all know.
Okay.
Sorry you didn't know about it, Sue, tell you that here.
You're not the only one.
Huh?
Sue's not the only one.
No.
So a lot of confusion this morning.
It was a little confused, that's why I was just talking about trying to make a protocol that who, who would, who would they contact before, you know? It doesn't matter, I mean...
If anybody else, I, I got one notification this morning.
Maybe they can see CSO.
And on that one, it was plain what was going on. In fact, I talked to the person, I, I emailed them back, or whatever it was, and that was that. And I did ask that if you guys had been notified, and I was told that you were, you were gonna be, or you had been, or something. But anyway, it wasn't a secret to anybody.
Well, no, I'm not saying that.
That's not, that's not what I'm saying, either. It's not that it was a secret.
Because what happens is, like, if Sue didn't make it in, too, then we couldn't function because Kathleen or Becca can't be out front by themselves, because they haven't been to motor vehicle class. So neither one of them can be out front and function by themselves. So Sue needs to be notified if...
Or Dale does, if it's the other way around, I would call Dale. The whole thing is, is it's not, I'm not looking at it like, oh, somebody didn't tell somebody. I'm looking at it like, the office needs to be opened by us, the employees. You guys definitely need to know if somebody's not gonna come in. But we're the ones who are here to open the office, and it's nice to know who's gonna be here and who's not. And, and this morning with the weather, I mean, I could've called out, too, and said, I'm not gonna be able to get in. And that's all I'm saying, if, we need to have that communication, so that we all know where everybody's at.
And if you wouldn't make it in, you would probably call one of us, or the three of us, or something, let us know, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, so we get notified.
Okay, that's, okay.
Yeah. You're right. So what I'll do is if I ever get CC'd and someone's not coming in like this one, I'll just CC everybody to make sure they all get notified. I'll have to get Becca's number, so I can put it on my phone.
Well, I got, I got it from her today, and she's got mine, too, so we're all set on that.
I'll just make a group and put you all together, Kathleen and everybody, so that way I can just send it right out as a one big group. That'd be best, and that way everybody will get it, and you don't have to worry, so, okay. That's that. I don't really have too much others, I gotta read some more stuff. You guys, you have anything, boys? I wanna read, I wanna go and get some information about this School Choice Week. You're gonna make the Saz and Shapiro meeting, correct?
Yep.
So this, this, I'll, I'll ask this again, because apparently I didn't ask it right. This states proposed budgets at the top. So this is the proposed budget for 2016.
2017, yeah.
2017.
Yeah, yeah. But Jordan has it, so he's gonna put it on the same form as we always had used. What, we approved, but we haven't approved last year's issues.
Then why is it going out in this form?
Because that's what Betty had done. Well, she gave it to us and not them, that's what...
I collected all the budgets that people turned in to me.
Confusing, doing this budget.
Can I explain this to you? I collected all the budgets people turned in to me. You guys wanted to see them, so I made your copies. I didn't know how it was gonna go from there as to how, um...
In our last meeting, we said that Jordan was gonna fill those out for us, so he'll get those all done.
So when are you guys gonna start having department heads in here to go over budgets, which should've started in October?
Hopefully we can start them next week, so...
They start pretty soon, but...
Yeah, well, some of them, we'll get right through the small ones, we'll go right through, that's what we have so far. We'll get right through them pretty quickly. So, but yes, we'll start scheduling them next week. We'll see what, Jordan, we already did Betty's. Remember when we had that meeting and we did Betty's already, 'cause we increased it a little bit?
Well, that's what's kinda me confused, you know, because I didn't see the spreadsheet on that one.
Yeah, 'cause he hadn't done them, yeah.
Hasn't come out since then.
Yes, he's what, yeah.
So we're, we're kinda, it's very confusing here as to what we've got for budget stuff. But it's all right, I'll just keep asking questions, so I understand, that's all. No problem.
Yeah, so Jordan is doing it, and we'll have it, and hopefully we can get some scheduled next week. So I'll look and see what he's got, and that we haven't gone over. And then, is he still, you know, let me just see who he has.
Can you ask if he's got the binder that goes with this, too? Or do I have to buy my own binder?
They have plenty of binders, Budget Committee probably has a lot of them. We have one, yeah.
I have to punch my own?
Well, apparently so do I, so you're in good company.
We are, do I think? Well, maybe not, maybe the Budget Committee gets theirs all done. Did they get that, no, yeah, they got theirs all done. That's right, I wonder why that is, we're spending money on that, but you can't handle the select?
Well, I don't know, but on Budget Committee, mine's not done, so... I always tell everybody, don't worry, I'm not the black sheep, I'm the psychedelic one with big flowers stuck all over me, yeah.
No comment.
That's okay, I know when I'm not loved, and I don't get my vapors punched. Don't say no comment.
No comment on yet. I don't know if any department business comes up.
Okay, so, Suzie. He has Planning Board, Conservation, Wreck Department, Library, and Summer Camp already. So we can set up appointments to meet with them, and these shouldn't take too long, like Planning Board, Conservation, Wrecking Library, we could probably all do the same night. I bet we couldn't.
Probably Planning Board, you'll probably have to do separate, 'cause they're doing so much more, they're gonna need a bigger budget.
That's okay. They've already done that, so I think we can, we can do it, but...
So when do you wanna start doing this? Are you gonna do it on your Monday night meetings, or are you coming in on another day? Or what did you wanna do? I can't set them up until you tell me what you want. And Summer Camp, you said, was the other one? Yeah, I think, and I've got all those in my folder. Not in the same format, but I've got them. You wanna do Conservation, Wreck Department, Library, and Summer Camp together, and then Planning Board separately? Not together, but you know what I mean.
I'd like to do... Yeah, we could, I guess. Summer Camp, I would like to have a longer discussion, because I think we need to change that process on how we do Summer Camp.
All right. So is a half an hour for each of these planning time?
Planning Board might take a little bit longer, but I don't think, it won't go over an hour, I don't believe. It's not that big of a budget, but...
What about Summer Camp?
Summer Camp are probably about the same. I would do, um, do you wanna do a couple Monday night, and then a couple, like, Wednesday night?
Whatever.
'Cause we gotta get them done.
There's that difference.
Why don't we do, um, the Planning Board and the Conservation on... When, their meeting's usually Monday?
Yeah, but we got one more meeting next week. Then there's no meeting in two weeks in a row.
Well, unless we come in to do this, I mean, it's Monday, it's not like it's, well, it's a day off. No, Sunday's a holiday.
Monday's a holiday.
Your office is closed on Monday.
They're being slow on Monday.
Yeah, but...
Yeah, but you could come in and do a budget.
We can come in.
I mean, if the, if the department head was willing to come in, anyway.
'Cause we've got to get them done. Why don't we try to do Planning and Conservation Monday? What time, you had something else scheduled next Monday, correct, on the 19th? We don't have anything?
I don't even, yeah, it's free.
All right, so let's see if we can do them. What time does, does Planning Board meets every other, or?
First Thursday.
First Thursday, okay.
Well, you're gonna see them in a couple hours here, anyway.
Paul's not gonna be here, 'cause he had a family emergency, so... Tonight he's not? Yeah. So Sean will be filling in for him. All right, so next Monday at 3:30, do you wanna do the Planning Board?
Planning Board, yes, and Conservation, yes.
At 3:30 Planning Board.
Yeah.
4:30 Conservation. Is that all right?
Yeah, that's okay with me, how about you?
Do you wanna do another one that day? Wanna do the Wreck Department at 5? Or the Library? I don't know if either one of those are gonna be quick, or...
Wreck Department will be easy.
If you've looked at them, or, um...
Yeah, we can do, we can do the both, if you want, put them in for half hour increments.
Okay.
That will be done.
And then you wanna do Summer Camp as a separate day?
I do, because Summer Camp...
All right, so 5:00 Wreck Department, 5:30 Library.
Yeah.
All right, and then, um, do you wanna do that Wednesday? Or is that too close to Christmas, the 21st?
Summer Camp, wanna do Summer Camp Wednesday?
I don't care.
Oh, it's easy, at 6.
At 6?
I don't, I can't get here till 6, so...
Let me, well, we'll wait till Royce comes back and see if he can do that.
Try Summer Camp, is Thursday okay instead of Wednesday?
What if you...
Thursday, 'cause Wednesday I won't be here.
I've got a very boring life.
Not this, oh, that's next week.
Oh, the 21st.
Yeah.
Yeah, you will.
I will, but...
But Thursday's fine, I mean, I don't care.
Well, I'm just thinking, 'cause Jordan wants to be in here, because we wanna talk to her about changing that process.
All right, and I gotta check with Shirley, too, see if she can come.
Okay.
Okay, so next Monday, the 19th. We'll have Planning Board at 3:30, Conservation at 4:30, Wreck Department 5, Library 5:30. Provided they can all do that.
Yeah.
And then Summer Camp at 6, on Thursday, the 22nd.
Yes.
Okay. So I'll check with everybody, and hopefully they can, if they can't, I'll get in touch with you guys, and we'll try to figure another time out. Because the only thing I can see as a problem is Monday, I mean, the Library, because she's open Mondays. Today she's not, and she's open Monday nights, I don't know what time.
All right, well, we'll see.
Well, maybe I can get her to come at 4:30, I'll, I'll talk to her.
I think she's open Mondays till 7:30.
We'll see, if not, then we can maybe do her here before.
Before Summer Camp?
Yeah. Kind of 6, and then just Summer Camp at 6:30 or something. That way at least those ones that we have will be done, and we can push them off to Budget Committee, so they can start reviewing what's happening, 'cause they'll be starting to need to. So we can also, we can give them Planning Board already, so, 'cause that's already, not Planning Board, but Betty's.
Appeals.
Appeals and Budget Committee, she's already done that, so... Okay. Where did Royce go? We need to make sure we tell him where everybody's going to. I'm just gonna do this. Give this note to Dale in the morning to look for solar powered lights for the flagpole on the top. Either solar pilot or hard light, but both, just so we can get a good, we need to get that done. She can look it up for us, 'cause she's the one that bought us all the supplies, so... Yeah. Get on that. That's all set. I don't really have anything else, except for some things I need to read through and go online and check this out. So I guess, um, out of business? Yes, Ben?
Well, I was watching last week. I'd kinda like to lay down a little bit. If you have a question, I guess, I'd rather you went straight to me and not through somebody else in the office here on assessing questions. So if we can just lay that out straight, let's keep that separated, I guess, and be professional, just ask me directly, instead of going through Rebecca.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't need to, I didn't wanna bother you during the week, and I figured it's immaterial.
But, okay, but you still want an answer to that at all? You're still looking for that information?
Well, yes, I'm...
Sue should be able to get that for you from Trio, because I have the number that I have, but it's all dependent on what's in there now, according to abatements and things like that. I don't have all that exact number, what, what the difference is before, is that your question?
Oh, okay.
So Trio should be able to...
As a matter of fact, I think you gave it to me sometime, and you told me about it.
Yes.
And I probably didn't write it down.
Yes.
Was it 9 million?
No.
No?
No?
Oh, you mean the assessment before and after?
Yeah.
The total assessment for?
The waterfront.
All right. I thought, oh, I don't mean-
Difference roughly to 1.8, somewhere around there. I can't remember the exact number, but it has to come out of Trio, not what I have on my Excel spreadsheet, because with all the abatements and things like that, they've changed. Who are you working with? I'm just curious, out of my own personal curiosity. Who are you, who are you getting this information for?
Oh, some guy down, uh, hometown. He, I told him to come up here, but he won't, okay? He'd rather talk.
I was just curious, it's like, you may end up with an abatement request and/or lawsuits down the road, so I'd be very careful as one single selectman slash assessor getting into too much conversation, but that's my two cents. Do with it what you want. I'm gonna keep it at the board. This big stakes talking, right, you know, could be coming at you very shortly.
Well, he's the type that won't ask, probably won't ask me again. Forget if I knew.
Just looking out for ya. Yeah.
This is what we have so far, Jordan?
What?
This what we have so far?
Yeah, that's all the ones that I said, of course.
You want to?
No, I could just staple it. Do you want it stapled or paper clipped? Paul, you want me to staple it? Do you want to staple it instead? Stacy, do you want me?
Thank you.
So are we still on other business?
We asked him on other business, yes.
So, um, last week, Dana reminded you about asking about right to know requests being online, and you told him you'd have an answer for him this week, but he's not here. So I'll ask for him if you figured out where you're gonna go or what you're looking to do with that in putting right to know requests back onto the town website.
I asked Jordan to put the request on the website, yes.
So once it's filled, he'll put it on the website?
Put the request, put the request on the website, not the answer.
So basically, if I ask for something, you would say Deborah Wilson asked right to know request on how often Debbie Ricks is still coming in here? And that question would be on there and not the answer?
Yes.
I'm not sure how that helps, because that would, the whole reason behind it was so that if you had more than one person asking the same question, they didn't have to come in here and multiple people fill out right to know requests, and Jordan have to keep pulling all of that and copying it.
Because he has a copy of it, so if they need a copy, they can come in and purchase one. I mean, that is really, you know, he has to research.
So it's a, it's a monetary thing now to create revenue instead of just putting the answer on the-
It's just because, you know, that, and that's, you know, I asked him to put the request on, but he doesn't need to put the answers. It's time to do it.
Oh, good, 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 good.
If they want to get a copy, they have to pay for a copy to cover costs, but if you wanna email it or something, I can just email it to you.
So I understand that, but did you see how it was set up before, Jordan, where?
That's how it was before.
No, 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 I'm just-
I have seen it.
I haven't gotten my question out yet. I haven't gotten my question out yet.
Well, let me explain myself first and then you can ask your question. So I'll put the request on so everybody knows what the question is. My phone number is on the website. I have an email on the website. If they don't wanna pay for copies, then they can just ask me for it.
Okay. It's usually not about paying for the copy. It's just that once, when somebody comes in and does a right to know request, if they get charged, like, let's say $15, which was the recent screaming and hollering thing, so if somebody gets charged $15 for it, in the past, what they paid for goes then on the town website so that everybody has access to it. I'm just curious as to why that wouldn't continue to happen.
I disagree on how that is, because I'm gonna put the request on there and they're marked and they can contact me and I can send it to them. So that's just how I'm gonna do it.
And I think that's okay. I mean, I don't think all that needs to be out there. I mean, if they need to know, I mean, they can call him and ask him. I mean, I think it's-
So you don't think that there's enough traffic in and out of this town hall that if 15 people want that information, 15 people can come in here? Okay, I can do that.
Yeah. All right. Is that it for now?
Yep.
So I make a motion that we adjourn for the time being. We'll be back at 6:00. All right. Second?
Well, yeah, it's around the middle. What time is it?
What's that for?
Okay, thank you.